Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at six o'clock on Thursday, February the twenty-seventh. This is budget meeting number five of the 2020 Township of Edpersburg Cardinal budget process. And second item on the agenda, I'll call for approval of the agenda. Can I have a mover and a seconder to approve the agenda as circulated, please? Counselor Hunter and seconded by Counselor Dillabaw. Those in favor, motion is carried. And the next item on the agenda, item number three is disclosure for cunary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening? No disclosures. Item number four on the agenda, business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting, if any, and the minutes were circulated. Does anybody have any questions or business arising from those minutes? Okay, so, hearing nothing, hearing none. I'm gonna proceed on with the agenda. Item number five, delegations and presentations, we have none. Item number six, discussion items, we have none. So we're on to item seven, which is the action on information items. And the first thing we're gonna do is review the 2020 budget revisions as we left things at meeting number four. And so we have a briefing note in front of us. And so we have the briefing note in front of us with the changes that we made. And we have the capital projects analysis in front of us as well. You can see where we made the changes in the capital project. So just to review, the following changes were made. So the 2020 library board grant was reduced by fifteen-five to ninety thousand. The administration capital project, ten thousand dollars for drawings for the renovations upstairs was removed. So you can mark that as an X and that one's out. And it shows on the draft capital project sheet. Now, financing the recreation vehicle, we added seven thousand nine hundred eleven dollars as an operating expense to the operating budget and removed that item from the capital, a list which was therefore thirty-five thousand dollars removed from the capital expenditure. And I don't know whether, the staff will probably speak to that a little bit later on as we go through the agenda. The next thing we did, we added two thousand to Cardinal Arena building repairs as an operating expense. Then we reduced the scope of the engineering costs on Cedar Grove Road to a hundred thousand. And I think we agreed at that point that since there was two hundred thousand in the budget, that we would transfer the other hundred thousand to the public works reserve. So that's kinda where we stood as of, with capital and operating as of the end of meeting number four. And you can see the changes to the reserve and the reserve funds on page ten of twenty-eight. And just let the, through the chair, through the CIO to the treasurer. So tell us where we were short of balancing as of that point in time. Just remind us where we were.
Right, so in the information item at the first paragraph indicates that we still have to have a hundred and forty-one thousand one seventy-nine or a two-point-four-five percent increase in the tax rate to balance.
All right, so we know that as of the end of that meeting, we were looking for a hundred and forty-one thousand one seventy-nine. Or alternatively, so we either have to find it someplace or accept the tax rate of two-point-four-five percent. Now, since we ended meeting number four, there's a number of things that have come up in the interim period of time. They're outlined in the agenda, we'll get to them eventually. But the first thing we're gonna do is talk about item number seven B on the agenda, which is the Spring 2020 St. Lawrence River Response Plan Development. So, you've seen the briefing note. And the briefing note basically reviews what we've done in the past. And to just recoup very quickly, in 2017, our direct cost in response to the flooding was a fifteen thousand dollar expenditure. In 2018, it was a five thousand dollar expenditure. And in 2019, there was a five thousand dollar expenditure. But in 2019, most of that expenditure related to the work that we did to replace the, or to construct the berm around the water treatment plant. So the staff is asking us to make a decision on a number of questions. First of all, for 2020, is council still willing to continue to fund the same activities as 2017, 2018, 2019 out of general taxation? And basically that was purchasing and supplying and distributing sandbags and distributing sand, loads of sand in strategic places. So, do we have consensus around the table to at least go that far in 2020 before I introduce the concept of going further? So do we have a nodding of heads someplace around the table to go at least as far as purchasing and distributing sandbags and distributing sand? Okay, so that answers that question. Now, the next question is, is the committee prepared to have frontline staff work overtime, filling bags and/or tracking product? And while there may or may not be an overtime implication to it, it's been pointed out to me that last time, the, last year, or the year before, the overtime came from the fact that people would call us on a Saturday for sand because they're just getting home and starting their weekend's work and realizing they need sand or bags, where our crew has all been gone home for the weekend on Friday night. So that's why we resulted in some overtime. Now, the committee might say, well, if we're ahead of the game, we'll have this done during the week time and there won't be an overtime implication. But the other possibility of an overtime implication is if we get into the project of filling a number of sandbags and having a stock of filled sandbags on hand. So let's first of all deal with the concept of having a stock of filled sandbags on hand and in reserve. And let's, for the purposes of this first discussion, assume that our public works department can be tasked with the job of filling X numbers of sandbags, loading them onto pallets and having them in reserve and doing the filling during working hours sometime between now and let's say, end of March, beginning of April. Are we prepared to assign that task to public relations? I'd like to hear some discussion, to public works rather. I'd like to hear some discussion on that concept.
Where's the chair?
Yep.
Do we have the manpower?
Well, we've got six men in our public, six or seven men in our public works department. I mean, we're not gonna divert them away from things like snow plowing or things like that. But, you know, I mean, if you want, I can pose your question this way. So through the CIO to the director of public works, can we find time in the normal, in the course of normal business hours, in the next six to eight weeks, to task the public works department with filling a number of sandbags and having them placed on reserve, in reserve?
Do you wanna speak to that?
I'll step in for more than done. One of the things that's gonna come up immediately is the road conditions with potholes and what have you. With the freeze thaw cycles, there's been a lot of road damage. So I think the crews are gonna have a lot of work ahead. If that's postponed, then you'll end up with larger potholes and so forth. And aside from that, we don't know what the weather's gonna bring us all, so it's hard to predict at this time. Jim, you got anything to add to that?
The only other thing is gravel roads. This is the time of year that we get the calls. And we'll have most of our staff working on gravel roads to keep them up and get them ready for accepting new gravel in May. The, if we make them too early and they sit, then the UV's gonna get to the bags, even though they're UV protected. We could have some wasted sandbags. So again, it all depends on how the spring proceeds. And if Mother Nature is kind to us, then we may have some time periods to get ahead of the game, which we did last year, and we put them on pallets the same way. But if Mother Nature's not nice to us, then we'll be, we'll be hard at gravel roads and as Gord says, potholes and a few other things, washouts, that sort of thing.
Okay, so I'm going to open the table up for discussion. Give the staff an opportunity for their input. Now I'd like to hear from the people around the table. Counselor Cameron?
Last year, we did fill some sandbags last year. We put them on pallets. And then did we deliver them to certain locations?
No, sir, we actually had it, had the compound at Cardinal shop open all the time.
Right.
And people could come and go as they please. It was very hard because they came at night and you couldn't track them well.
Right.
So we'd have a whole bunch of sandbags made up and then the next day they're all gone.
So you could pick up some more if you had the time and so on. But last year, did we not deliver some bulk sand to certain points?
And that is, we've, I think, already addressed that because that is what we did last year, so that would be contained in the, in the statement from before.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a little bit flavor here. And, and so, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would be, I would be acceptable to having sandbags done by our staff during working hours if they can, if they can do it. And if we did deliver some bulk sand to certain locations and sandbags, I would, I would support that as well. As far as additional overtime and additional costs, then I think it's up to the, I think it's up to the flood victim. So I'll put it that way to make the arrangements.
Another speaker.
Well, if we're delivering the sand, if our crew's really, really busy, they haven't got time to deliver the sand or if they run out on a weekend, they need it. I think it'd be just as cheap and just as efficient if we just called a contractor that sells sand and have them deliver the sand by the time we paid a man to come in at overtime and pay for our trucking stuff and arranged to get it. There, one call to a couple of ones in the area that have sand, the pits that we get the sand from, we have the sand there and delivered. So I kinda think maybe as far as the delivery part of it, if some have got time during the day in certain spots, we can put it. But if we get a call on the weekend or they're busy snow plowing and somebody wants a load of sand, I think it'd be just a sheet for the township, just to hire, call them, have them deliver the sand. Just tell them we need a two-truck load of sand delivered to Tullapoint and dropped in place. Like Dexter, some of these ones that jump in the truck, they have it there and be delivered, so. Or sandbags, like extra sandbags. If they got some time to fill, some of their own time, all right. If not, deliver the sand and if they need sandbags there, surely somebody from one of our departments could load the sandbags up and drop the empty bags off and fill, so.
Other speakers? Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of points maybe that we could consider in addition to dropping sand in the three or four locations that are extremely vulnerable. With respect to filling the sandbags, if we wanted to have a small inventory in some location, Cardinal worked out there or whatever, it's possible, it might be worthwhile approaching the high schools. The graduating students have to have a certain number of hours of community service, which is usually unpaid service, I think it's forty hours or something like that. And, you know, you may get a handful of seniors who, senior students, who would be willing to come out and spend a Saturday or a Sunday to fill bags. I don't know how many bags you can fill in a day or whatever, but if you had a squad, you know, you might get some ahead of it. So that's just one point. The second point is, I don't think the rising water in the St. Lawrence, I live on the St. Lawrence and I've watched it since 2017. I don't think the rising water comes like a lot of flood situations do. When the people living in floodplains and that kind of thing. It's a more progressive, slowly, kind of semi-predictable type of situation. I think we need to have some kind of a communication link set up with the people, the IJC and Moses Saunders or whatever, to know if they're reducing flow, then the chances of backup are gonna be increased and people will wanna take mitigation measures. If the flows are staying high, you know, higher than they have been, then maybe the, the rising levels won't be so bad. So it kind of allows public, the people who are gonna be seriously affected, to measure when do they start to take action. It's kind of fruitless if you say, well, general warning, we're gonna have high water and the fifty or sixty residents down on Tullapoint all get busy in the next two weeks filling sandbags and then there's no high water. You know, it's, I'm just kinda thinking of some kind of a communication link or communication setup that we can get out to our public to allow them to, you know, get on board and get, because I think it's primarily, it's their responsibility. Those are property owners and most of them I would think would accept that. They wanna protect their property and septic tanks and all that kind of thing.
Can we put that information on our township website?
Get to it in a minute, Chair.
Go ahead, did you get it?
Well, I was just wondering, can we put that information, flood levels, on our township website? For people to check.
Through the chair, we could, we could certainly put the link toward, so that they could see that. I think on page, on page twelve of twenty-eight or page two of three with respect to this information item. One of the, one of the areas that we were looking at was to develop an improved information package for those that have been previously impacted by the flooding. You know, on how to properly construct a sand wall in respect to safe, electrical safety, septic system safety and to get that distributed out earlier. And to Counselor Hunter's point with respect to contractors delivering loads of sand, I think that makes good sense that, you know, that it's ordered and delivered direct instead of dropped off at the, you know, one of the depots and then loaded up again and transported. It makes some good sense.
What about the sand?
And it was, it was also one of the items that we were looking at was whether we distribute empty bags to those particular locations that have been impacted so that we have some better, better tracking of that through that process as well. And the other item that we could look at is sort of people helping people network and, you know, expanding out to the, to the schools that they could potentially link up with some of those residents that they have a volunteer base. Is there some other items there?
Looking for additional speakers?
Yeah, hold on. Looking, I was flipping through, looking back at, you know, we took a lot of pictures of the high water levels last year and anywhere from the start of May to through till, you know, whenever. But that's when the really higher, the higher parts hit, May tenth especially. Down on our own Legion Way with the washout by Conestoga. And I think, you know, they put out the blocks there so people couldn't use the road and shut the road down. So dates-wise, it's not looking like it's going to be needed in March to fill the sandbags. To me, it looks like it's more, you know, mid to late, to late April. So my question, if I may, through the chair to Mr. Gass's, like when you filled them last year, was there any idea of how many? Like, you know, a six-hour shift would fill or a four-hour shift would fill or?
We, we filled, in one morning, we filled twenty-two hundred bags.
And that's with just the six, the six crew going or did you have a greater crew?
It was four.
Four.
Because I had two graders. It was about twenty-two hundred bags and we fill them off, off our sander and it works pretty slip.
And so the sander, that was where I was going with it, was so the sander idea works, works pretty well?
As far as I'm concerned, it's just as good as some of the
Yeah, some of the fillers?
Yeah.
And so if we were able to mobilize, because I like the people helping people network, but is that something that high school kids could help with? Is there, or does it need to be like you guys? Is it pretty specific to who could actually, like a couple of kids, no issues with?
I just need somebody there. I mean, we've got a lot of safety and all that stuff, but it'd be one of our operators operating our truck and operating the conveyor belt to bring it off. We take the spinner off and just fill the bags off the chute. So, and if you get enough people there, there, I must, I must add that the, there was a couple of extra hands as well that day. Probably individuals that
And you need some volunteers, right?
Yeah, and I mean, that's what's all gonna come together once we get to that season and everybody seemed to wanna pitch in and help out. And we just sorta had to keep them where we felt they were safe. And hauling the bags and pile them on the skid is the most important part.
Yeah, getting them usable so that everybody can
Tied.
One, one last question for you, if I may. The twenty-two hundred in that one morning, do you have a number of roughly how many you did altogether? Like, just you guys did, not how many you gave out, like as far as empty bags, but how many you actually bagged?
I'd be guessing, I mean, I just know that we had, we counted them up and we, that was a rush day because it was one of the first days.
Bad days, yeah.
I couldn't tell you. We went through quite a few of the existing bags that we had that day or that period.
Twenty-two hundred, four guys, four hours?
Probably four, five, five hours, yeah.
Twenty hours total, totally an hour.
So, and we, and again, the plan that we have from last year includes that.
Right.
So we'll do it when we can and
You just need some more support volunteer-wise. So the, you know, the people helping people network, if there was a way to get, you know, I think that idea in the briefing's a great idea. There's a way to connect them, you know, through us, you know, while we're there helping this year, that sort of thing.
Absolutely, I mean, we'll make it work somehow if we get to that stage where it's an emergency. And, and I've already got a request for bags for tomorrow, two hundred bags. I mean, I got family coming in, we're gonna fill bags and be proactive. So, so this lady, the neighbor of mine, but she's, she's ready to go. And she's gonna get her own sand and stuff like that. So you're gonna see a lot of that too, in my mind. People just helping themselves and, and the bags are no problem, they're there, that's what they're there for.
Yeah, and having the sand delivered to a different location alleviates the worry of having that done. It's just the bagging part of the palletizing of it.
We eliminate, we eliminate our insurance issue.
Sure, thank you. Can I just, one more point, if possible? And in all of the reading that I've done through, through the IJC, the information that they've directed us or given, directed towards us certainly indicates, and they've said that it is our responsibility to, to prepare and to be ready and more resilient. So I, I think that while something may not come, the more ready we are and the more able we are to have a plan that we can put forth and mobilize quickly to, if it's needed, the better that is. So I would like to support the recommendation and most of the points that are in
Okay, so I'm going to try to wrap this up in the following manner. Ask the clerk to be, and maybe you might wanna get what I'm seeing for the minutes, more from the camera than from notes. So a couple of basic principles. Number one, I think it's better to be prepared than it is to be caught in an emergency situation. Number two, this water is going to rise slowly, it's not gonna rise overnight, but it will vary as much as three feet in a, in a heavy wind. That's a given. So it can, in some circumstances, circumstances, arrive overnight. Number three, and I'm gonna ask the council which way you want this done, what is gonna be done. I have been putting on my Facebook page and on my columns the fact that now is the time for people to be prepared. I do not think that there's any point in waste, in waiting. I quite agree with you that the crux of the issue is gonna come about middle of, middle to end of May. But there's no point in waiting until then. So, the question has been raised, how do we communicate this? We have tax bills going out. I am quite prepared to put a note in the tax bills and I'll sign it either as mayor or I'll sign it as mayor and council, your choice. But I'm quite prepared to put a note in the tax bills, colored paper, attention, be prepared now. Be prepared for rising waters, identify yourselves, let us know where you are and get your properties ready, that kind of thing. Haven't written it yet, but I'd like to see it circulated in the tax bill and it's my recommendation that we do so. I think it's important that we make it very clear that people have been well warned, well in advance. Now, as far as the preparations, I think it's extremely important that, that we know where the problem areas are going to be. At the meeting that I held with the joint management team, I had asked that the properties be identified, that the owners be identified and that the phone numbers be identified. Now, not on May the tenth, I had asked for that. I'm hoping that that is being done. I'm hoping that our staff knows where the problems are going to be and where, and who they are going to be. Now, as far as advanced preparation goes, I am hoping and I am depending that the staff knows where the sand is going to be dumped ahead of time. And I'm talking about beginning of March, beginning of May, late April, during working hours with our equipment. I'm quite prepared to see the first round be delivered by us with our crews during working hours to certain locations. to certain locations. I'm hoping that the staff has identified those locations as well as the locations to distribute sandbags. I, I am hoping, because we have provided direction, that there be a good quantity of sandbags on hand, on hand, and that we have also identified where additional quantities are gonna come from and, and the length of time it's gonna have them delivered into our staff. All of those things should be done now, and by now, I mean between today and beginning of May, late April. Now, the hard core fact of the matter is, the board has identified that they will keep flows at ten thousand seven hundred cubic meters per second through to March the thirty-first. That is going to delay the opening of the, of the shipping season by ten days and it is going to lower Lake Ontario by about one centimeter, if they're lucky. And it may not lower Lake Ontario at all, depending on the inflows, but there is no avoiding what is going to happen. Once we get the first of April, the, the IJC has told the board to take advantage of every opportunity to keep the flows up, but that that must be done in a manner which will accommodate shipping. So you can bet that as of the first of May, they're gonna have to throttle back the output over Moses Saunders Dam to less than ten thousand seven hundred cubic meters a second and we're gonna see buildup at this end of the river, there's just no avoiding it. So I'm hoping that we can avoid this, reacting to this as an emergency by dealing with it in the normal course of business in a very proactive and, and sequential manner. But my worry is that we have not identified all the areas yet at this point in time. So I'm looking for staff to give us a report that they know where the areas are, they know where the problems are going to occur, and they know where they're gonna deliver the sand, they've got permission to do that, and we have some way of circulating that information in the tax notices that will be going out. Now, when will the tax notices be going out through the, to the CAO? I see the staff is getting them ready.
Correct. So I, I believe we were looking at next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday is folding day.
All right, so we know the notices are going out next Wednesday, there's already been a circular prepared to go in the tax notices, to add another piece of paper, costs us another two or three cents per letter. I know that not everybody in the township needs to get that letter, but I also know that a vast majority, and it's too difficult for the staff to sort out which ones should get that extra leaf of paper. But I, I think that there should be a leaf of paper that indicates exactly the kinds of things that I've been talking about. That tells the whole township that we have been thinking about this and that we have been pre-planning our response and, and we're responding in a, in a responsible, in a proactive manner. So unless I'm hearing around the table some misgivings with regard to the approach that I've just mentioned, and I'm talking about all of the things that I've just mentioned, unless I'm hearing misgivings around the table, I'm urging that we'll proceed in that manner, all those ten steps or so. So do I have any concerns?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the question? Do we have access to a hydrologist who could cover basically every meter of the shoreline in D.C. to determine what, what is vulnerable and what is not vulnerable?
We have access, I'm gonna answer that question. We know we have access to South Nation, we know that South, South Nation has provided us with the LEEDAR mapping, but I don't think that the LEEDAR mapping that we have gives us sufficient detail that we can identify the problem. So in answer to the question, our best resource, if we use it right now, is South Nation.
That's correct.
Have we used them?
We, we have been in contact with them and we expect it to have some answers back shortly.
Along the lines that Mr. Bradley's questioning?
Similar to, to that line of question that Mr. Bradley has brought up.
Okay, so does that answer your concern?
Yeah, like, as I mentioned, I live on the St. Lawrence and, and I can almost count the number of properties that won't be in trouble on, you know, myself included and Tonneau Point, and also point to the ones that will be in trouble, simply by the topography and so on, right?
Right.
And the previous occurrences in seventeen, eighteen and nineteen.
Now, my response up to this point in time has been directed towards private property owners, but it has already been identified here at the meeting that we ourselves as a municipality have some vulnerabilities and our vulnerabilities lie on Legion Way west of the Legion, between Legion Way and Conestoga. We know that we were vulnerable in that area last year, we knew that, we know that the high currents washed away the riprap on the, on the south side of the Legion Way, and so my question to staff is, what steps, if any, have we taken to protect ourselves in that area of, in that area of vulnerability between last year's washout and, and what we can expect this year? And I'm saying, expect three to four inches higher than you got and expect as strong occurrences as you have, and expect the winds, because they'll come. So what have we done there?
So following, following last year's events, we did make some improvements to the, to the road up along Legion Way to, to better prepare for those type of, type of impacts. However, the, the reality is, depending on what that level gets to in that wave action, we, we certainly are not going to be able to create barriers along that entire shoreline area. So I think we're certainly better prepared than we were last year with respect to that, with, with the improvements done.
So what you're basically saying is that we will get overflooding over that section of, west of Legion, up to the end of Conestoga, we'll get overflooding.
There, there is potential for overflooding, yes.
Okay, is that Legion Way and is that west of the Legion or east of it?
That's the Conestoga.
That's the Conestoga, and it's right over.
Yeah, it's completely, that's where it was washed out.
It's dug up.
Yep.
Chair, I don't know the answer to this. At the bottom of North Channel, between North Channel and Tonneau Point, there's an outlet from the bay.
Yes.
That goes through into the, into one of the channels.
That's correct.
The old gal. Who's responsible to maintain or clear that outlet? Is that the township responsible?
No, because the interesting thing here is that once you come down North Channel Road to the bottom of the hill, at some point it ceases to be a municipal road as you turn the corner and becomes private property. So I'll say to the CAO, at what point and who's responsible for that outlet?
So through, through, through the chair, if, if I'm remembering correctly from the bylaw, that outlet portion, the twin culverts are the township's responsibility and as soon as you get over those culverts, it turns into the private.
Okay, so that means then that we would be responsible for making sure that those culverts are flowing to their maximum?
Correct.
And if I recall correctly, even though those culverts were flowing to their maximum last year, we were still getting overflow over the road?
That, that is correct.
And that...
If there was debris though, they tend to get clocked up with a bit of debris and I'll take it, I'll just keep you notified if you don't mind when it's like that, but it does overflow the surface as well.
Now, so the next question that arises there, and it's okay to say that once you come to that culvert, anything beyond the culvert is private property, we're not responsible for it, but let me ask this, what is our plan or do we have a plan to address a situation whereby the overflow over the culverts in that area becomes too much for passage of vehicles? And of course, the corollary to that is, once you get overflow over the tops of the culvert, you have a good potentiality that you're gonna wash away the road surface. Are we prepared for that?
Well, we, we would be prepared in, in the sense that we would close the road at, at that particular, particular spot, but that's certainly something that we want to identify in our public education program with, with those residents, right? To be prepared that they, they, they very well may need to, depending on that circumstance, right, they could end up being, being on an island.
Yes.
So that, that, I think that's part of the, the education process with, with respect to that.
That can happen down there. Our problem is that we don't have a robust communications process, we don't have a mechanism to deliver a, a good education program, other than by letter or by hand delivery. Now, are we going to go the expense of hand delivery in that area?
Mr. Mayor, I've been going down there once a week for the last three weeks when you put your column up, I've been going door to door. I have one fellow, I can't go anymore, because I'm sure he kicked the cane to me, so I just let the neighbors talk to him.
Do they understand the problem?
Well, I told him, get ready, it's coming, no matter what you think, get ready, and yes. I'm hoping to even take Jim up on it, is maybe give them a couple pickup trucks when you do your skids and put them right on their pickup trucks instead of putting sand down there and they'll have the bags all ready, ready to go, because that took a lot of time last year, I was down there volunteering, it was a tough old goal. So if we had a couple of their pickups, you know, two or three skids, that sure helps get ready.
So are you suggesting that we, that we find a mechanism to load their pickup trucks at the point where we're creating the pallets full of sandites?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Now, we know that we have a forklift available, or I don't know whether it's available or not, but we know we have a forklift across the road at Virchell's, he has one, whether or not we can arrange it so that those pickup trucks arrive at a time where six or eight of them can be loaded at the same time, I don't know whether we can organize that or not, do you think it would be possible to organize that?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So we gotta get them off too, so maybe Mr. Virchell just lives up the road too, right?
No, the, the, no, the forklift remains in Cardinal.
I thought he had one, saw one in his little graduate there.
Yeah, there's one, there's one at the top end of North Channel.
Yeah.
I don't know if it stays there, or maybe it's the one from Cardinal, I don't know.
I don't know. I will look into that, Mr. Mayor.
He's headed there off and on, so, yeah.
Yeah, I will look that up so we can load it and unload it.
Through, through the chair, if, if I may.
We're going beyond where we were ten minutes ago.
We, we, we are, and, and just what I want to bring up is that we, we don't, when we're, when we're doing the, the pallets and the sandbags on the pallets, we don't have a weigh scale. Right? And then what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a forklift and then we're gonna put it on the back of a pickup truck and potentially do damage to the pickup truck. And then we're, then we're, then we're into liability because that, that's, that's, I, I understand, like, the, the concept is, is a good concept, but in the practicality of, there, there's, there's some, there's some risk in, in trying to get that in there and positioned right in, 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 in the back of a, of a pickup truck. That, it makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's a liability factor there too, I mean, not, not only is the potentiality, we set it in the truck and we bust three springs, but there's also the potentiality that, you know, that the truck becomes tail-heavy and as he gets halfway down the road, he loses his steering and, you know, and then, then we're in serious problems.
Okay, let's do it this way, Mr. Mayor, what about the boom truck here?
The which?
The boom truck, what's his name, North, or, pardon?
Norton. And have him deliver down to certain spots?
Well, I'll just set it up, one day, four skids, one-shot deal.
Okay, cost of the township, there's a cost of the township. So now it gets back to, it gets back to this table, whether or not you want to go that expense, we don't have a, we don't have, well, let me, let me stop just for a second and ask the, through the, through the CAO to the treasurer, what kind of a number do we have in our various budget lines to accommodate what we're talking about here right now? What, what kind of a number do we have in our existing draft?
I, I can answer that, Mr. Chair, we have two thousand dollars in our, in flood expenses.
That's the limit of it?
That is, that is the limit for dedicated to flood expenses.
So that's almost wiped out with purchased bags, I'm just gonna say we've got the bags.
So through, through, through the chair, if, if we're going to be looking at purchasing fifteen thousand bags, we're, we're looking at about forty-five hundred dollars in bags.
So that's a budget implication that we have to deal with and this is the right time to deal with it. Okay, good discussion, now I need them to hear some more discussion. You're here that if we go beyond where we were, in seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, we're looking at four to five thousand dollars. Over and above what's in the budget right now. I need some discussion, Councilor Dilavon.
Mr. Mayor, how many property owners do we actually know? And is this eleven, this eleven's not true?
Through, through the chair, if, if it may not encompass everyone that had some type of impact with high water, that number of eleven is accurate with respect to South Nation in twenty seventeen coming down during the high water levels and doing their assessment.
Twenty seventeen?
Twenty seventeen.
Okay.
So one, one of the, one of the items is that if, if we're not, if the township is not aware of, of a property that experienced high water and the property owner dealt with it themselves and did not contact the township for additional help, we, we don't, we, we don't know about that. So, so we can't say that, you know, beyond a doubt that there was only eleven properties that had any kind of, of, of impact. That, that's what we know of right now, there's prob, there's probably a few additional ones. And one of the, one of the, we probably need a higher stock, because if it goes up a, a few additional inches, that may impact substantially more or it may not impact anymore.
Yeah, okay, so we know that there's a minimum of eleven?
We, we know that there is a minimum of eleven, I'd, I'd like to say ten now with, with, with the great work that we did with the, with the more permanent burn construction at the water treatment plant.
Yeah, so...
That's our...
Okay, I think we have a sense of direction here, I still need some talk about these additional five thousand dollars or four thousand, five hundred dollars, something like that, I need some talk.
Well, why don't we budget five thousand dollars and, what's in there now, two, did you say, two?
Correct.
So why don't we budget an additional five thousand and if it's spent, spend it, I mean, we may overrun it even, but, you know, if a disaster occurs, but why don't we budget for that as a security against having to purchase bags and sand and so on?
Well, we're the ones, I mean, clearly if we're gonna budget it, it has to be raised in addition to that one forty-one that we're talking about. So am I getting a nodding of heads around that? Councilor Hunter?
Well, I'm not opposed to buy, budgeting to buy the sandbags and provide the sand as far, as far as going with extra expenses starting to deliver it, I think that's up to the property owners, it's their responsibility, we have the sand and the bags there, they gotta protect their own property, they... They have to find, come and get it. So most people have trailers or something. Yeah, we're not gonna set it on a truck, but if they bring in a tandem trailer, that half the people along the road are having them, because they have heavy boats and one thing and other that they truck around, that they have trailers that they can rig up, put the sand on, and no trouble setting... Average pallet weighs probably two-ton sand on it, probably heavy yard of sand. So probably two-ton you got as pallets.
Okay, so I think what we're getting to is delivery of the bags to specific points, delivery of piles of raw sand to certain point by our pickup of filled sandbags. You pick them up at our location. I think that's where we're at. Now?
I showed you, add to it, Mayor, I still think, I know you said you're not opposed to us delivering, our own people delivering the sand to different spots. I still think it'd be more economical for us to have a contractor.
Even during working hours?
Even during working hours. By the time we buy it and send the guy $23 dollars and something an hour to go and wait, and at this time of the year, when you're going for sand, there are no guarantees that the guy's gonna be there with the loader to load it. Depending on where you go for the sand, you're likely talking four hours or more by the time they do a turnaround.
I know, but now you've overrun, now you've overrun...
You might pay a hundred dollars for delivery, so...
Yeah, I know, but now you've overrun your $2,000. And even if we bump the $2,000 up by an additional five, now we're at seven available. If we're gonna have contractors delivering it, you're gonna overrun that $7,000 very quickly.
You're gonna get that, Jim's gonna budget that, that hours against the flood regardless, whether it's our guys or whether it's a contractor coming in, gonna get budgeted to that line item.
Well...
Yeah, the other thing, in addition to that aspect of the discussion, Mr. Mayor, is that in the previous years, like, the folks down on my way, they probably have some of those bags left over. They don't even need bags, they just need to stay.
No, no, yeah, but let's not get into that, that's, so, we can't even guess that.
No, I know. But the thing is, when we're talking like 11,000 or 15,000 bags or whatever, I don't know if we need that many, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, that's why I've said, we wanna know what our stock is on hand, and we want to know what the availability is and the delivery, the delivery time. I mean, our staff will be able to tell by the rate at which they spin out, at which they disappear, whether or not they need to place that order or when they need to place that order to ensure that we don't run out. And, okay, so I don't want to get into micromanaging to that extent. So now the issue on the table is, do we have the prep work done by a contractor by our own people? I'd like to hear some discussion around that. Very quickly.
Does anyone know the cost of sand?
Delivered.
Delivered?
So topsoil is about $460 a load, delivered?
Delivered, we'll say.
If I may, and I could be wrong, and the world Superintendent can certainly correct me. But typically, what we've done in the past in advance of that is had a contractor come and drop off the loads of sand at the Public Works Depot in Cardinal.
Yes, and we've also gone and picked it up ourselves.
And we've gone and picked it up ourselves.
And that, by the way, is a good idea, because those trucks will not go on half-load. The roads will be on half-load for a period of time, and maybe to the end of May, if it's wet and so on, so... The best place is to have it delivered right to the depot.
Okay, I think that part, we're gonna sidestep for now and let the staff do it in the most financially efficient manner. All right, the last thing, the notice that goes, and I wanna get clarity on this. The notice that goes with the tax mail, with the tax. Is it signed by the mayor or the mayor and council? I wanna know whether I've got support here. Okay, well, we wasn't gonna put names, I was just gonna put mayor and council. And we all agree.
That's a good question.
All right. Okay, so I'm gonna move on from there. But clearly, I think we've come to the conclusion that we're gonna put $5,000 additional dollars in.
So we're moving that line item of $2,000 to $7,000?
Yes, we're putting in additional. So now, through the director to the Treasurer, and allows her to keep us on track here. We started the meeting looking for $141. We're now looking for $146 XXX. Okay. So there we are there, and all we did is get the item B on the agenda. We really accomplished a lot. Okay, item number 7C, Port of Johnstown Admin Management Fee Increase. So we had a briefing note here about that increase, and the increase was that, or the, I think the recommendation was that that additional money, $11,375, in the Port of, which is representing the increase in Port of Johnstown admin fees, which is not in the budget at the present time, that it be put into a reserve account. Is there any, that's the recommendation. Is there any second thinking on that account, or on that issue? Mr. Bradley?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what the merit of putting it into a specific reserve. Why don't we create, this is gonna be $120,000 over a 10-year period, because it's compounded each year. And why don't we create another reserve account? And because that money could be used for... Well, if it goes into the recreation, it's gonna get, it's gonna disappear in a sense. We're not gonna recognize that it's there.
Well, you know, in view of the discussion we just had 10 minutes ago, I know what I would do with that $11,000. I'd put it against the $146 that we already have to raise. I wouldn't put it, it would just take it into...
No, but I'm thinking, over the 10-year period, rather than into a separate reserve of its own.
I wanna get through the 2020 budget here.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there any appetite? I mean, I know the staff recommendation is to put it into the recreation reserve, but is there any appetite to put it against the $146 that we have to raise here today?
I'd support that.
Am I getting a nodding of heads around the table?
I don't support it, I think it needs to go where staff has recommended. We're supposed to be putting $45,000 a year in the reserve, and we're not up to it, so...
Okay, difference of opinion, need more discussion. Need more discussion. Who's speaking next? Come on, it's A or B? Time to Fisher-Clot B. Everybody puts their heads down, nobody wants to look the mayor in the eye. And you did, and you did.
He's pretty clear on that.
You can't keep deferring, we've got a major capital expenses and reparations for two Zambonis over the next couple of years, they're gonna have to be replaced. You need to start building for it. Can't keep diverting. You're gonna have a high tax increase sometime or another, so you might as well start a little other time. We just heard a presentation here Monday night telling you what you need to do, that you needed to set your budget, and then add another 1.2% to 1.5% on top of that.
That's just capital, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna, since nobody else is speaking, I'm gonna speak here, and I'm gonna straddle the bridge between you and Mr. Bradley. I can go either way, I can put that $11,000 right into operating and defray the $146. Or alternatively, I kinda like the idea of putting it into a different reserve account, a separate reserve account, and letting it accumulate for a few years until it becomes something substantial. And maybe we'll find out if we handle it properly after both three, because it is cumulative and it does compound, maybe we'll have enough to actually buy a Zamboning. And so, you know, or something else substantial. So while I wouldn't support putting it into the recreation reserve account, I would put it into a dedicated reserve account and somehow mark that account as being a port admin fee account or something like that, port admin fee reserve. So, I'm not getting any take-up either way around here.
I can, I'll support the middle, the middle stance, I like that idea. That way it still builds reserves, but it's not solely dedicated for recreation. I can support that.
Oh, thank you very much.
Leaves it pretty broad.
So I can support that, as long as we dedicate that reserve as a capital reserve.
Oh, yes, as a capital reserve.
As a capital, not for recreation.
Okay, well, you seem to be coming to a meeting of the minds on that class.
I think you've got it.
Okay, so I'm gonna just change the recommendation slightly. The additional $11,375 in Port of Johnstown 2020 administration fees to a dedicated... Port Capital Reserve Account. Go ahead. You have some problem with the name.
Well, I'm just not sure if we should, Port, it may cause some confusion. So, you know, maybe a dedicated capital fund.
A dedicated capital fund.
Reserve fund, right?
Okay.
We put it in a reserve.
Give it a name, though.
Yeah, gotta have a name.
I wanna clarify something. In the action item itself, the policy implications, so the reserve fund policy allows us to set up reserves, which are not interest-bearing, and that's just by a resolution of council. Or we can create a reserve fund, where I'm allocating, like I did with the modernization money, into a interest-bearing fund that will grow that money. So if we do that, that's by bylaw. So I just would, you know, bearing the fact that we name it whatever we name it, I think I want clarification on whether we are just setting aside the money into an accumulated reserve, or are we setting the money away and building on that fund in terms of interest-bearing?
Okay, the law, tell us how to do it.
So we'll have to set up a bylaw to name the fund, and at that point, we can, you know, have further discussion on to what the fund is. And in that bylaw, you will actually have to try to put some words around what that fund is used for.
Okay.
So we'll, we can bring a bylaw back that will further, you know, flex.
So if somehow you can tie the name of that fund to the source?
Yes.
I don't care what...
Yes, we can do that within the bylaw, but then we need to further delineate what, as per Counselor Hunter, it's not used for operating, but it's used for capital. We'll try to come up with a word, or, and then the actual, like, use, or dedicated use of the...
Can we endorse what the Treasurer is advising?
Yeah, one more question, throw a wrench in the works here. Six of us sitting here at the table tonight know where this, what this is. This is $11,000 and some odd dollars coming from the increase in the port. Three years' time, when we're not here, who's gonna know where this money's coming? It's gonna be something in this bylaw that dedicates all the money from, that raises above the $758,000. It's transferred over, over in this, that's gonna have to be spelled out someplace in there.
And that's the reason why we're doing it by bylaw, as opposed to by resolution, because bylaw extends beyond the term of council.
So that's the concept. Okay, so you'll have to, you'll have to find the words at the bylaw to make the concept.
You even get to name it now.
All right, so I have consensus there. I'm winding up the discussion on that item, which, that item was 7C. And I'm back on 7D, St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission. And, um... And this gets, this gets into a tough spot, because I had hoped that this recommendation wouldn't come forward in view of all of the positivity that we saw from the BIC announcement, Bio-Industrial Innovation Center yesterday at Brockton, and the opening of their Eastern Ontario office. And I was, as I was saying to the CIO today, yesterday was like hot and cold. The first half of the, the first couple of hours yesterday, which was the BIC announcement centered on Sandy Marshall's $15 million that he's been able to pull together from the federal government, adding to money that BIC already held, $5 million, by the way, that BIC already held. And BIC used their own $5 million from their own investment fund so that the federal government would have a partner, because the province wouldn't partner on that agreement. So yesterday morning, very, very positive, and nothing, no qualms at all. And after the announcement ended, then we started our commission meeting. And again, I was very disappointed, because the budget was brought forward, and I don't mind saying this on camera, the budget was brought forward and we allocated a big chunk of money for a project that is, in my opinion, not fleshed out. But in any case, we have a recommendation in front of us. The committee is recommending that, and it is that committee recommends that council direct staff to send a letter to terminate the township's involvement. I cannot support that recommendation, I'm gonna put that on the table right now. Can't support it at this time, but floor is open for discussion. And I'll answer any questions as to why I feel that way.
Well, let's go, why you feel that way?
If I may jump in before you start, I will certainly reiterate, I was there for the BIC grand opening announcement, and it seemed very, very positive.
Thank you.
I will support that.
The reason I'm not, the reason I'm not supporting the recommendation is because I think the commission has some internal problems that we're trying to address in a very methodical way. Can't talk about it all, but in a very methodical way, very discreetly. And I'm hoping that over the next few months, we will iron out a lot of our issues. I'd like more time.
Mr. Mayor, is the light, like, we had a meeting here two years ago, I guess, with the, during here? Is the light a little bit brighter in the town than it was a year and a half ago?
Oh, I'll be able to, you know, I'm begging off again, and I apologize for it, but...
Is it a little brighter than what we had here a year and a half ago? Look me in the eye, please.
Tough to do. Let me put it this way, at the end of March, or by the end of March, we are going to have a full analysis and a full report from the Commissioner as to what was accomplished in the last six months. And I'm gonna tell you, what Joe Hendricks is doing and what BIC is doing is very positive. How much of it is being, is as a result of the commission work, I can't say.
That's what I wanna know.
Yeah, I can't say, because I don't know.
You can't say, because you don't know.
Right. I spent a lot of time talking to Mr. Hendricks. I know that Mr. Hendricks is a part-time, he's a, just so you understand, he's a part-time, I think it's two hours a week, employee of BIC. And, you know, his job is to go around, and he's got about five businesses right now that have concepts for sustainable bio-industrial products that can be made biodegradable, and they're products that are organic in nature. And he's got about five different companies that have concepts, and they're working with those companies, those five companies, to get them in front of Ben George, the engineer, the chemical engineer, for analysis. Joe's job is to round them up, make sure they qualify, make sure they satisfy all of the prerequisites that BIC is looking for, and that Ben George can qualify them to go to pilot projects or go to commercialization. And so that's what Mr. Hendricks is doing, and I cannot add what the Commissioner is doing. Go ahead.
I'm not ready yet.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm ready. I say, I agree with dropping out of it altogether. I didn't have any faith in them the last time when they were here speaking. I didn't have any faith in them the last time when they were here speaking, and I don't have any more faith in I shouldn't be paying Mr. Hendricks out eleven thousand dollars for a campaign in first, and then, because I think he's doing more first, and BIC's doing far more first, and the commission doing, I think it's just a dog and pony shoulder running.
Counselor?
This, this is in the form of a question, I, I guess, to either you, Mr. Mayor, or, or to staff. I, I was not impressed with the, with the, um, presentation that we got last year, the year before, whatever it was, and up until a short while ago, I was totally in favor of, of supporting the recommendation. However, the question I have is there are six other municipalities involved here, and I understand that this is a regional economic commission, and Edwardsburg Cardinal has done well in the past on, on our own, uh, and we have made things grow. But I also understand, that I need an answer to it, that because we do well, and one of our other municipalities in the region are having a hard time, uh, by us being in here, this helps them along, am I, am I correct in assuming that?
Well, our membership in the commission creates a sense of togetherness. That, it, it creates a sense of unity, it creates a sense of collaboration, and that, and that's what I don't wanna destroy right now, is the fact that we're, we're part of a collaborative effort.
With, with.
And I, and I think that this will all sort itself out by the end of this calendar year.
With, with.
If not sooner.
With that, um, and I've, I've, I've had discussions with two other mayors that are in, in this. I would, I would support, I would support waiting one more year to see where this goes. And, and, and that, and, and if it doesn't go anywhere, and, and we're back into the same boat here, um, then get out, get out at that time.
Appreciate those words of support, and by the way, I, I'd like to recognize, I don't know who, which of the other mayors you've been talking to, but I'd like you to, I'd like to thank you for opening that dialogue, and I wish other members of council would speak to other mayors as well, and I kinda think that maybe you do.
I do.
And I don't know where you're standing here right now, would you like to speak to this?
I, I struggle, I mean, I support the collaborative effort, um, on it, I just, like, I follow all of, all of, you know, the corridor's social media and have since they, you know, they made the presentation when I wasn't on council, when I was on, um, on the CDC, however many years ago that, that was, probably four years ago when the concept maybe, uh, came around, I think we've been involved in it in, for three now.
Yeah, June, June the thirtieth is the end of the third year.
The end of the third year, so they came to us and made the proposal to us to try to seek support at CDC, and then I think it came through their recommendation through CDC to, back to council to, to, to do the buy-in, and and, while I felt it was a lot of overlap then, I, I still feel it's a bit of overlap with what InWeir does at the United Counties, uh, now. I, I follow Charlie, I follow, uh, the, the group, the Saint Lawrence Corridor, on, on all their social media. You know, for a promotional company, they get absolutely no, uh, no traction at all on any of their media that, that's posted, so, you know, the one or two likes on their, on their, on their posts are usually me. Beyond that, though, I personally, after we had this discussion last year, reached out, uh, to the email that, that's provided on the website, declared who I was from my township, uh, address, and, and asked for minutes to, to the meetings that, that had been held, and to this date, uh, I have still no reply. So, I, I, I have a hard time continuing to put fifty percent of, of our economic development budget in, in our township toward, towards this to support growth in, in the other townships. While I know that may relate back through reduction through United Counties eventually, I, I just, I struggle, I struggle with it when we're cutting, uh, pool filters and stuff like that out of our own budget, so, um, you know, I gave it another year, uh, last year when we had this discussion, um, because this culture was going to change and, and everything was going to change, but I think we fulfilled our three-year, uh, uh, initial promise, and, and I would struggle, um, adding forth to that because of those reasons.
Mr. Mayor, did they have a lot of input in that, uh, company coming to Brockton? Uh, no, did who have a lot of input? Saint Lawrence? Yeah, well, uh, they, uh, when, when BIC was lobbying the federal government, they did provide a very, uh, robust and complimentary supportive letter, uh, to the federal, uh, funding, Fedna was, Feddev, uh, they did provide a very comforting and supportive, uh. Were they the ones that got the fifteen mil, had something to do with it, to get it from the feds? Uh, well, they provided support, but I think the, well, I mean, I know the major effort was Sandy Marshall, because, I, I mean, we, we have been talking to him for the better part of twenty-four months, and, uh, in that period of time, we've got to know him, his board of directors, and, and their program, we've got to know that all very well, and we have a high level of confidence in them and what they're doing, and the way they're doing it, and the manner in which they're, uh, using the money that they have had, and don't forget, they've been in operation since two thousand and eight. So, and, and they're, they're handling things, if I can put it, just so you understand what's happening, they had a big federal provincial grant that they've been operating from since two thousand and eight, and then that was renewed, I think, in two thousand and twelve. And what they do, they take, they take, uh, equity positions in companies that they've worked with and that are moving to commercialization, and they don't buy shares, they buy convertible debentures in those companies. And they take quite substantial investments, half a million to a million dollars in those companies. As the companies get up and running and making money, they convert those convertible debentures to cash, and that cash goes in their investment fund, and they've built their investment fund up quite substantially. Their goal is to have thirty million dollars, um, in their investment fund, because once they can get to thirty million dollars in their investment fund, they can continue to operate BIC without the need of any Feddev grants or provincial, provincial government grants. So they have a real serious plan as to how to move forward, and they're, and they're very, very astute with what they make investments. I mean, of ten companies that they work with, and they make even, uh, ten of those companies might actually come to per, commercial production, they might only take equity positions in three of them. They take the equity positions in the ones that they think will be robust and profitable the fastest and the quickest, and then they take the convertible debentures and, and convert them back to cash. So they're very smart.
And now we got them here working for us.
Yes, we do. Yeah?
I think they're gonna do a lot more than.
Sorry, i- 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 if I may, one, one of the reasons that this was brought forward, uh, tonight is because I figured it would be a, a, a difficult, uh, in, in, in lengthy conversation to get that on. There's still the opportunity to, to bring that forward again at the Admin Finance Meeting in advance of, like, in advance of the March thirty-first deadline, if council decides that they, that, that they want to.
Let's not beat them to death, let's do it. Let's do what?
I think if, uh, I would prefer, I'd defer a for one, for another month, if, if we can, if we can manage that, but.
What about deferral? What about deferral to December thirty-first?
No, we, when, what's the date that we have?
So, so, so if I may, it's, it's, it's March thirty-first, twenty twenty, we, we would opt, would opt out, and I believe that we would have a fourteen thousand dollar payment in twenty twenty-one.
Yes, yes.
We would pay all of this year.
We would pay, yes, we, we would pay all of this year, but you need, you need to give a year, uh, notice if, if, if committee or council wants to defer it, so.
Okay, so, uh, can we defer this till at least March, or till our next meeting?
Admin Finance Meeting on March ninth.
So.
I would, I would prefer that.
Can I ask the question, what are we gonna learn between now and March the ninth that's gonna change our mind?
Well, I can, I can answer that, if, if, can I answer that? I, I'm gonna have some more, uh, clear discussions with more of the, more of the stakeholders and some of the other municipalities, and, uh, and find out exactly, uh, why they're staying or why they're, uh, they're leaving, and, and, uh, help that influence why, why I should go against what I would vote, uh, tonight, and have them possibly, you know, change my mind.
Is there only one member from our council that sits on the, uh, commission's board?
Well, we, as, each municipality appoints two people, the mayor and, and a, and a representative of business, a business representative. Now, our business representative is Brendan Bland, who's the general manager at Greenfield, but unfortunately, what's happened is, uh, in the last three to five months, I guess it is, Brendan has been tasked with not only running Greenfield Johnstown, he's also in charge of the Greenfield operation at Verens Quebec, and he hasn't been able to make a lot of the commission meetings. I've had some initial discussions with him about whether he'd like to send me a letter, uh, resigning his position so that we can get somebody else to fill that second spot on our, on our board. One of the things that I would really like to do between now and the next time we talk about this is I would like to have you, I'd like to have you meet behind closed doors with Joe Hendricks, uh, and just hear from him. He, he's not going to.
Does he have a role in the commission?
Say pardon?
Does he have a role in?
Yes, he's a member representing Augusta on the commission. So, can I get, uh, a, a motion to table this until March? And I, I'd like to leave the March date open, because, uh, we do have a council meeting at the end of March, right? And it can be discussed at the council meeting.
That is correct.
So can I get a, a motion to table to the end of March? Buy time here, try to buy time, try to give an opportunity for things to work.
Buy time for a year.
Yep, that's true. These things don't always happen quickly, and you know what? Excuse me, just one second, you, you've got a fourteen-member board, seven mayors and seven business representatives. Takes a long time to build a consensus, it really does. And I just don't wanna be the only one out. Smith, uh, Mayor Smith Gattke for Leads in the Thousand Islands went out, and then came back in. And, uh, I know she's in on a, she has the same concerns that I do, so does a couple of other mayors. I, I would prefer to find, try, try to find time so that it, we're not leaving by ourselves. If we're gonna leave, there's gonna be two or three of us leaving, and we're not alone.
You know, Mr. Mayor, what, excuse me, go ahead.
I, I, I would, I would echo, uh, that sentiment, I, I believe in regional, uh, cooperation highly. And I certainly do trust in, in your leadership and, and other mayors that, um, are, you know, staying in for, for that reason, and, you know, the ones that I've talked to are really telling me us not to be the only and the first out, you know, and I accept that, that argument's there, but I would like to, yeah, I'd like Joe to try to at least have a shot at convincing me why, I, I haven't really heard why, other than we don't wanna be the only one here.
Mr. Mayor, when we first looked at this, uh, three years ago, I was in a lot of support of it, because, because I worked in business development, I know that these things take a long lead times, and, um, so I fully supported, uh, our getting involved. Some of the problems I have with it is, one, the board's far too large, in my view. Secondly, there's secrecy, you know? And because of that, I mean, they could come and do a closed-door session here. We don't have to have this secrecy, uh, so that nobody knows what's going on. And if, if we know that they're working on a four or five projects, and that they have a high probability of scoring on two of them, then, you know, there's some kind of a feedback that gives us the warm and comfortable feeling. But we don't have any of that.
Well, we do.
Where is it?
Well, I've reported it a couple of times, there's two companies that, there's two companies that Sandy Marshall has invested in that are opening, that are in commercialization in, in the Sarnia area. And both of those companies have identified Maitland Site as their, as their preferred location for their next plans.
But that's a follow-up from BIC, it's not a follow-up from the commission.
The commission has been pretty heavily involved in, uh.
I don't buy it.
Well, no, they have, in arranging the, the potential, um, in arranging the potential purchase at the invest the site. Like, there's land that hasn't been purchased out there.
So, why doesn't BIC take credit for that, then? Why is, the, why is it sheltered under the commission? You see, that's, I don't know how many, uh, people are paying their fifteen thousand or what we're doing here, but that's, it's a sport to commission. I think the people of this township, at least at this level, should be fully aware of what that money's going for, and what it's being spent on, and what the prospects of success are. And until we get that, I will not support this project longer.
Okay, um, so can we get agreement to table to the, till the end of March?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, camera moving, table to the end of March, does he have a second? Oh, second, please.
I can, that's a question after a second, so I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Um, does, does the, the date that's being suggested give us enough time to respond, and if we choose to opt out, um, opt out?
Through, through, through the chair, there are five Mondays in March, so, uh, it would, it would come to council on March twenty-third, so that would, that would give sufficient time, if that direction is given.
And so as long as clear direction comes out of that meeting, there's a recommendation, clear direction. So it doesn't have to wait until the April meeting for, or it can come directly out of wherever we, we move that, that night, and.
Through, through, through the, through the chair, correct, if, if, if it's being discussed and, and a decision made at council.
Okay, I have, uh, um, okay, I've got a mover and a seconder, I'm, I'm gonna call the question on the vote here. I could say more, but I don't wanna say it in a public session, but, uh, I'll try, I'll try to arrange a mechanism where I can say more, uh, behind, in, in an in-camera session. I'm gonna call the question on the motion to table to the end of March, those in favor?
Two, three.
About three, opposed, one, two, three, six of us here. Okay, so three in favor, three against, motion fails. Where do I go from here?
So, my, my suggestion is that we would bring it on, on the Admin Finance Meeting on March ninth.
Well, as of this point in time, I do not have a mover and a seconder for the recommendation that's on, on, in the briefing. So, I feel quite comfortable putting this off until the Admin Finance Committee meeting in March. And I, I think, I think in view of the fact that I don't have a mover and a seconder, and we've had lots of discussion, I'm moving on. And, uh, this briefing note will come back at the March Administration Finance Meeting. I don't know how I'm gonna get anything done, and I don't have the time, but we'll see. All right, uh, now, budget impacts. Now, budget impacts. I'm at seven E, and the first budget impact concerns an increase in our insurance premiums. And there is a briefing note in front of you that tells you that the actual premium increase in our insurance premium has come in at eleven thousand dollars higher than we anticipated. That means higher than has been budgeted for in the draft of the budget that we're looking at. The township has an option to increase the deductible for public liability to twenty-five thousand from ten thousand, which will decrease the premium by thirty-two thousand dollars. This decrease in premiums would result in a seven point four percent increase in premiums over 2019. So this, there's no recommendation here. So the question that is up for discussion is, are you prepared to increase your deductibles in order to decrease your premium? So I need some discussion on that, Councilor Hunt.
No, I don't think there needs to be too much discussion. We increase our payout by fifteen thousand dollars and we save thirty-two thousand dollars by increasing it. So I think it's a.
No-brainer.
No-brainer there. We've only had two liabilities over the last few or four years.
So if, if I'm in through the chair and the treasurer may wanna add some more to it once I'm done, if I, and correct me if I.
Okay, you go ahead.
Or do you want to?
No, you go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. What, in, with talks with the insurance broker, they feel comfortable with the township increasing the deductible based on our claims experience. Most of our claims are not necessarily through the public liability aspect. The last claim we actually had, we didn't use our deductible, we just paid straight out the claim. So most of our claims, if we did have them in the past, were either vehicle claims, which are only a five thousand deductible, and that is not increasing. So they felt that the increase in the deductible in this section of our policy would be, would not harm the township in any way.
Okay, so, Deputy Mayor?
Just to do diligence and to back up what, what that last comment was, I contacted three of the other townships, had some good discussions, got some actual hard numbers from one of them. The other two aren't up for renewal until, I think it was August and September for them, so they haven't faced what we're talking about exactly yet. But Brockville alone had, their deductible is actually fifty thousand, and, and they're presently working on twelve liability claims, and they're always able to negotiate those out. And they find that that's a very reasonable deductible to have. So I originally was slightly worried about the number, and then I had a couple of discussions and was, they said that that's, you know, the twenty-five's a great, great number, and we'd certainly be saving on it. So it makes me feel very comfortable.
Anybody else jumping in here? Okay. So am I getting a nodding of heads to increase the deductible? Okay, and take the savings. Go ahead.
Might, might I throw one more loophole in? In, in, instead of taking all those savings, we have fifteen percent worked into the budget of keeping that in, and that gives a little bit of a buffer if there is a claim that we have some money to cover that. As, as of right now, we don't have anything within, within the budget to, to, to cover a, a claim that, that we may have to pay out with respect to the deductible.
But just so for my clarification, if we agree here tonight to take the reduction in the, in the, in the, or excuse me, to increase the deductible.
Correct.
Right. We've already built into the budget the premium increase.
Of fifteen percent.
Right, so it would save us looking for this eleven thousand dollars that's referred to here.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Yes.
So that's basically what we would be doing.
That, that is.
And what you're suggesting is that we don't take advantage of the savings. We leave it where it is.
Leave, leave it where it is, which I think is probably more advantageous.
Okay, all right. So the idea would be, we take, we increase the deductible, don't have to raise this eleven thousand dollars at the briefing of the first meeting. We've got sufficient built into the existing draft of the budget to cover the increase. Okay? All right, so I'm getting a nodding of heads around the table?
Who is BFL?
Say again?
Who is BFL?
Uh, BF Lorenzetti, they're the broker of record. So they're the ones that go to the market to place this risk.
So they spread it around?
Yes. A lot of our risk is carried by Lloyd's and the bigger, and the major big ones.
Sure.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so I just, I would like to have some sort of a, a, a commitment on this. I'd like to have a motion that, that we increase the public liability deductible to twenty-five thousand dollars to reduce the overall premium. I need a mover and a secondor to do that. Okay, so I have Deputy Mayor Deschamps moving, and do I have a secondor?
I have a secondor.
And I have Mr. Bradley seconding, that we're increasing, that council agrees, committee agrees to recommend that council increase the public liability deductible to twenty-five to reduce the overall premium. That's the motion on the floor. Further discussion, if any? Hearing done, about to call a question. Those in favor? Carry. Thank you. All right, now I'm on Budget Impacts Curbside Collection, number F. And so you have the briefing note in front of you. You see what has happened here. I had a long discussion with the CIO and the treasurer about this. And I'm gonna give the CIO an opportunity to sort of explain how this came about and what the, the newest information is, and I'm referring to the January invoice. So if you would.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. So if, if everybody has had an opportunity to read the, the information item, somewhere in around October of 2018, Waste Connections inserted a ten percent environmental surcharge. It wa, it was not picked up until the, at the end of, of 2019 with, with respect to that, the final overage of that. We have had, the treasurer and myself did have a conference call with the district manager of Waste Connections. At that time, there, we had stated our position with respect to, that the contract was relatively clear with respect that the, the amounts were set, and anything that would be additional charges would require mutually agreed to in writing. The, the position of Waste Connections at the, on initial onset is that we, we paid, we paid the invoice, so by paying the invoice, we accepted the, the charge. At this time, with respect to the January invoice, Waste Connections took off the environmental surcharge fee for, for January 2020. And really, we're at a, at a point moving forward where they, they feel that the way that the current contract is structured, that they would not be able to continue with the, with the contract as it's in its current state.
When's the contract expire?
The, the contract expires in February 2022.
So are they saying they're terminating the contract, or they're going to go to 2022?
I, I would say that they would want to either enter into negotiations to restructure that contract. And if, if that's not an option, I, I don't believe that, I, I would suspect that they will, will look at alternative ways.
Is there no termination clause in the contract?
Typically, the way that this contract was structured, it was for, for that term. And, and one of the reasons is that with, with the waste industry, the, the way that it is, and I would say that that's one of the services that you really don't want to mess around with the, the customers. I want to make sure that your, your garbage is picked up. So it would take some time to actually have a contractor come in and bid and, and have everything in place for seamless.
Contract didn't have termination clause.
That's, there is a weakness of the contract. It does not have a termination clause.
What if they went broke?
Yes.
What would we do? And they're not gonna tell you six months old, we're gonna go broke in six months. Anyway, that's for future work, but.
The contract that doesn't have termination clauses, very, very, very bad. Anyway.
I think the contract, you know, go to the council, go to your counselor and find out what his position is. Because I don't, they're locked in till February twenty-two.
You, you mean the lawyer?
Your lawyer, yeah.
Yeah.
Our lawyer.
Yeah. And I think they realize that, how, now that they've had the, the confrontation with the CIO.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the advantage of no termination clause is in our favor in a way because, you know, they're, they're already boxed in. Under contract law, they're gonna be forced to do something.
And they can request that we renegotiate, but we don't have to acquiesce to that.
No, and we might be good citizens and sit and negotiate with them. Is the ten percent shown on the invoice?
The ten percent is shown on the invoice.
How did we miss it?
How, how did we miss it? You mean, how did I miss it?
No, not you.
Yes, me.
The staff missed it.
I, I, at, at that time, it was, it was under my responsibility, so I.
It was you.
It was me, long, long, long and short, right? You, you, we've been, we've been in, 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 with, with, with what was formerly BFL since I, I wanna say around 2004.
Not BFL, BFI.
Oh, B, sorry, yes, I got it, BFI, thank you. Yes, yes, with BFI.
BFL is a.
That's, that's correct, too many, too many acronyms, too late in the evening. Thank you for that correction. So since 2004, and since we entered in with the latest contract in 2015, it's been, it's been monitored close, and there has not been any, any type of deviation. So, you know, when, when, when those invoices come in, you know, you're looking at it, and it's like, if it's twenty-six thousand a month, and it went to twenty-seven thousand in, in one month, it didn't necessarily trigger something. It does vary a little bit.
The tonnage varies.
Well, the, the, the billing varies a, a little bit. But it, it, in, in the past, it typically worked out. And then you would do your spot checks with respect to, at, at the quarter point and, and at the half-year point. What, what, what I would say is at the half-year point, I'm looking at it and calculating it out as, you know, times two. And, and it would have been six invoices in, but there was only five invoices in. Right? So at, at, at each interval, we were probably an invoice behind, and thus, there, there, there's your, basically, your thirty thousand at the end, so.
I don't know, I just think their argument about the fact that we paid it and we accepted it is kinda spurious. But on the other hand, you know, they may, I don't know what the legal position would be on it. I think it would be worth checking with our lawyers to see what the status is, go from there. And maybe search, search for a new company.
Well, and, and, and I think for, for, for tonight's meeting, it was just basically whether committee wanted to, to, to look at at, at anything additional in there, depending on, on.
That would amount to about an additional twenty-five thousand over the course of year, right? We spent two sixty, two fifty, two, on that.
Three.
On that line item, yeah. So you're looking at thirty-five to forty thousand a year.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk of money.
Okay, so Councilor Cameron wants in, and I have Deputy Mayor DeShant.
Um, in 2004, when we got away from, when amalgamation, we got away from garbage with our own truck and so on, we went with a company. The name of that company was, if you could help me out here?
I, I believe it was BFI.
Okay, now, the company that we have today, are they BFI or a part of BFI?
Neither.
So there was a new contract drawn at a certain time?
No, I, I'm going, the, BFI changed to Progressive Waste Solutions, and I believe that Waste Connections bought out Progressive Waste Solutions.
Okay, so they just carried on the same contract, or?
They bought out the business.
They bought, they bought it, they bought it in business.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking this is because I can remember back in 2004 or five, where our waste management company came to us, had to, had to change the contract because of the price of fuel skyrocketing, and everybody knew since nineteen eighty, the price of fuel was on, on move up. And here we are in 2004, we had a contract, and the council of the day decided to change the contract and give them the extra money. So we were nice people at, at that particular time, and it all, all falls back into, into the, into the fold. My feeling is, I think we should look for a new, a new company. And I don't think we should continue paying the increase that they've tacked on. I, I, I find the clause that says that because we paid it, in good faith, we agreed to the extra, I, I find that, I find that deplorable, to be quite, for any company to say something like that is, is, is just crazy. And I'm, I'm very disappointed they didn't come forward as a delegation and talk to us about this. So I, I am not for continuing with the ten percent at this time. And I think that we should put our energies somewhere looking for a, a different carrier. There are many more out there now. I've had my say, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, so, thank you. Through the chair, CIO. So if we were to, to cancel, this, like, so there is no cancellation clause for us if we cancel it of the contract?
So through, through, through the chair, I, I believe that if I'm, if I'm gauging it right from, from Waste Connections, from, from the fact that they've taken over the, the existing contract, and, and the existing contract is. I, 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 I would say from our, our point of view, we, in, in twenty, in twenty fourteen, I, I believe we were paying about three hundred and forty-nine thousand or something like that in, in annual. And starting in 2015, we, we dropped into around the two ninety-six, three oh, three, three oh-one range. It, it's been, it's been very good for the township overall. And I, I would say that five years into that contract with, with a new company, may, you know, potentially, is, is that one of the reasons why the former company is, was no longer able to, to continue on?
No, just so you know, so I'm just gonna insert a little bit of information here. Because I followed this right through from the base of BFI. And basically, what it's been is that Waste Management International has been gobbling up all of the competition in the marketplace, and they've just been buying, buying the businesses out, so simple as that.
Sure, so my question was, we, there is no cancellation clause on, on the municipality with them? So if we cancel, there's no penalty?
Well, we don't have right of cancellation any more than they do.
No.
There's no termination clause.
So, 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 so to, to, through, through the course of our discussion, I believe that Waste Connections would, would. If, 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 if we're, if we're not prepared to, to necessarily negotiate a new, new contract with Waste Connections, that, that they would be okay if they went to, to market.
In other words, we, we could mutually release each other?
I, I, I believe that, that from, from our initial conversation. I, I, I believe that, that from, from our initial conversation, that, that would be minimal.
Okay, so, so their comment back to us was that, that because we paid the ten percent, that, that they felt that that was accepting the terms of it, however, once approached with the fact that we found out that we were overpaying our invoices, they then reduced the invoice back to the original part. Is that not acceptance of the original con- contract or an indication of acceptance of that original contract?
Through, through, through the chair, potentially, but the, the information that we received was that that was in, in good faith that we were having a, a conference call, that they dropped the ten percent for January.
So we don't expect that to continue on our February, March, and April lines?
I am anticipating that, that in February, that, that ten percent would probably be ended.
Let it be known.
Let it be known.
So if I was making a final comment, then my, my comment would be, we've paid them the extra forty K, I don't see in any way, shape, or form how we would ever get that forty K back, but I'm all for shopping them, if that's the way, if that's the way it's gonna be.
Why, why don't we just submit the invoice with the price minus the ten percent? And, I mean, let them throw the ball back into their court. So then they would deny service possibly, but then you get into a wrangle. I think it's worth a discussion with your counselor.
With the legal?
Yeah.
Okay, so Counselor Hunter wants in, and then Counselor Dillawick, Counselor Hunter.
We are, I think we need to have a, Mr. Bradley said, I think we need to talk to your lawyer and get legal advice. I don't really see how you, you misbill somebody and if somebody happens to pay it, and then your accountant finds out after you misbill it, I don't know how they can argue that. I think that's why the ten percent was come off in January. I think they likely spoke to their legal department too, and were told that this isn't kosher, you're not gonna get away with it, so.
Well, if they underbill us, you can guarantee they'd be coming back and asking.
If, if, if we can get it back, great. If we can't get it back, we made a mistake, we paid something maybe we shouldn't have paid, but they've taken it off, and as long as they leave it off, I, I think, I don't think anybody's gonna think around this table, that if we drop this contract and go through a new contract, we're not gonna pay a lot more over the next two years for, because the number of people that are gonna be tendering it, as you say, they're being bought up. There's about three left in the area that might be tendering it, and it's definitely gonna be a lot higher than what this is, so I think if we can stick with the contract, get away with it for two years, pay what we wouldn't been paying, just say we're not paying the ten percent, that's it, we didn't agree to it, we'll keep paying for two years, you agreed to, and then go, because way everything's gone up, and then Waste Management and Thomas and who else are gonna bid it, so.
Okay, Counselor Dillawick. Uh, yes, I, I kinda agree with everything except for, I wanna go after my thirty-five to forty thousand. They took their ten percent, we don't, they don't have the right to do it, so get our lawyer and tell him that we, to write a letter, a nice letter that we want our thirty-five or forty thousand dollars back, and, and keep an eye on our ten percent come February, March. But that is part, that's not part of the agreement. It's supposed to be both parties involved.
And, and I agree with, with those, through the chair, I agree with those comments wholeheartedly, but, but like, how much are you willing to spend to try to get your thirty-five K back? What happens if you don't?
Well, we'll, we'll talk to, have them talk to our, our lawyer and see. I mean, thirty-five, forty grand, they stole. I'm sorry, because we have an agreement.
I don't.
Two written part, with both parties getting together.
I don't.
So, and they take it off ten percent, 'cause we have a conference call, and, and I, I presume it won't be back on February, March either. I, I would like to have our lawyer look at it and tell them that we want our, our ten percent back. Okay, so, so just, okay, I think everybody has made the point that, that we should seek legal counsel to try to recoup the overpayment. That's the first thing. The immediate question that we need to, and I think we've all, we've got consensus on this, we're definitely not paying the increase on a go-forward basis, so it has no, so this additional surcharge that we've seen, this additional illegal, I'm gonna call it surcharge, that we've seen, is not gonna have any impact on our two thousand and twenty budget, because our two thousand and twenty budget builds in the contract rate. Is that correct?
It, it does have the C P I indexed rate that is on the, in the contract.
Okay, so there is a, oh, so there's an escalation clause in the contract?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so, you know, my, my feeling of what's happened here is they tried us on for size, they got away from us, they got away with it, they got caught, they pulled their horns back, but my feeling is that what we should be doing is notifying them that we will not be paying any additional fees over and above the contract rate. Here's your check for January. We'd like to see this contract out. In the meantime, we've contacted our lawyer. Our lawyer will be seeking recovery of the overpayment from two thousand and nineteen, and leave it up to staff from here. Do you all agree with that approach?
Yep.
Okay, so there's about three decisions there. Number one, we're not paying it on a go-forward basis. We're putting them a notice that we're not paying it on a go-forward basis, telling them clearly that we'd like, that we want, we, we demand to see the contract, specific performance of the contract on a go-forward basis, and number four, we're gonna be seeking legal counsel for recovery. Okay, oh, everyone agrees to that? I've got consensus on that around the table. Okay, good. All right, now I'm at item number seven G, which is the two thousand and twenty budget. To obtain direction from committee on finalizing the two thousand and twenty budget. Now, the treasurer points out that there are four budget lines which directly contribute to the increase that we're being asked to accommodate here this evening. The decrease in the O M P F funding, the increase in policing costs, and the increase in the Conservation Authority levy, that is your one forty-one. You all understand where we came to one forty-six tonight, and now we need to raise, as I understand our situation at the present time, we need to raise a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and that is going to be somewhere just north of two point four five percent. Is that correct?
Correct, the, the accurate number is two point five three.
Two point five three percent.
Hey, what's, what's the dollar figure, please?
One four six, one seven nine.
One four six, one seven nine. Okay, so now the recommendation that I have on page two of two would have to be changed slightly. That committee recommends that council adopt a two thousand and twenty budget with a two point five three percent increase in the township's residential tax rate. That's the recommendation that we would have on the table right now, if I had a mover and a seconder, which I don't at this point.
I move.
Oh, you're moving. Mr. Bradley?
I'll get seconded.
And I have a seconder, Counselor Cameron. Further discussion, if any.
Guess we're not gonna pay any attention to what we're told on Monday night.
What was that?
We need to add a one point five percent tax increase every year to, to rid of your infrastructure deficit.
Well, there was a little bit of, there was a little bit of waffling around there, because the question was, do we need to increase that in addition to what we're already raising for capital? And I, and the speaker did not have a firm grasp of what we're already raising for capital. I, I didn't feel. I know, I know the point that he was making about you should have a dedicated infrastructure fund, levy, I guess. I'll leave that up to you, Counselor, if you wanna make a, an amendment to the recommendation, so that the recommendation reads that council adopt a two thousand and twenty budget with a three point five three percent increase in the township res- residential tax rate in order to introduce a dedicated infrastructure, a one percent, a one percent dedicated infrastructure levy, then put that forward as an amendment and find a seconder, and I'll call a question. We, we can debate that.
I'll put it forward as an amendment with a two point five three percent tax rate increase plus a one percent dedicated infrastructure capital investment.
Plus a one percent dedicated?
Capital infrastructure.
Capital infrastructure. Plus one percent dedicated to a capital infrastructure reserve, right?
Yeah.
Okay, as recommended by the asset management. Can I say as recommended by the asset management project program? Now, again, it comes down asset management program, and I'm not gonna put this into the motion, but we'll ask, it comes down to the same discussion we had earlier, is it a fund? It's not an operating, it's not an operating reserve, it's a, it's a dedicated capital infrastructure reserve fund, right? We want it invested.
You want it invested. Okay, well, it would have to come as bylaw, separate bylaw.
Yes.
If you wanted to do that, but yes, we could certainly create a, a fund specific.
Okay, so, now I'm just, I have Counselor Hunter moving the amendment. Did he have a seconder?
I'll second it open for discussion, sure.
Okay, so now I have Deputy Mayor Deschamps sec- seconding the amendment. We're only talking about an adding one percent increase to the township's residential tax rate. That's the only thing on the table right now. Do we add one percent to the townships? Whoa, wait a minute now, it's one point two, it will, it will be one percent added to the two point five three percent. That's what we're talking about. All right, so, you've already spoken in favor of it? You've seconded it?
That doesn't mean I'm in favor. I seconded it open for discussion.
Okay, you're the next speaker.
I'm the next speaker. Uh, I, I seconded it to, to listen to, I, I heard the, very clearly from the P S D discussion. I, I'd like all the council to have an opportunity to, to say their piece for or against the interesting idea that he brought forward, so I think the question I would have for the treasurer would be compared to what's the number we put in this year, what would that, what, what, what impact would that one percent be? How much would we have to put into that dedicated infrastructure fund, or that capital fund?
So a one percent tax rate increase generates fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-some dollars.
And, and the cost of that per person for that one, that added one percent?
Well, that wouldn't actually generate from person, because all, all tax classes would contribute to that fifty-seven, sorry, so it would really be hard to, to narrow that down to a, to a, you know, per capita, because every class contributes to that fifty-seven.
On a, a hundred thousand dollar assessment then, like, was it two dollars and four cent per one percent before? Was it something like that? Do you, there was a sheet.
Wait, what, what, maybe I, maybe I can help the treasurer out here. Take the median house, home, median residential value, 'cause I think you got a previous note.
But what, what I'm trying to express is that fifty-seven five is not all coming from residential tax.
Yeah.
So I have to take that fifty-seven five and then take whatever portion is going to be generated out of residential, and then, then further break it down again, so it's not a simple answer. I can certainly provide committee with a number of, you know, that, that that one percent is actually going to give you, but right off the top of my head, it's not.
You misunderstood, so, the taxation implication for, for each resident at, at two point, you've shown whatever it is at, at two point, what would the additional one point, one percent implication be? That's more of a.
Yeah, she's, she's saying that she can't give you that just off the top of her head.
Yeah.
But someplace there was an implication to the, to the median, the median residential property. I'm trying to think of which meeting you presented that to us, but I think it was long ago, meeting three. Long ago, meeting three. Average assessed value, properties with no change in, assessed for, no changes here. I can't put my finger on it.
I think the one, one closest one that we last did was three point three three, so if you look at a previous budget meeting at three point three three, we'd be relatively close on an impact on one property, but I don't have that in my package.
So I'm looking at the, on our package that we're on now, I'm just looking at the, that back to page twenty-four of, of twenty-eight, and, I guess, value, no change in C P A, and just sort of firing across that line.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand, so the, the increase in annual tax payment is six dollars fifty-nine cents. Is it fair to say that, like, change in total tax, tax rate is fifty, is point five six, so if you just double the fifty-five cents, is it not say, fair to say to be in the dollar ten range?
Probably, I'm, I'm thinking that, and if, if the, I know that some of the other councils, so at three point, yes, at three point three three, we were at twelve dollars and twenty-three cents, so yeah, it's pretty much maybe doubling.
On the median home.
On that hundred thousand dollar.
On the hundred thousand.
Per a hundred thousand, twelve twenty-three, so would be probably a dollar ten per month or around thirteen dollars.
Or a dollar ten more.
Yeah, on the, per hundred thousand.
Per hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I need other speakers here. Any other speakers? I don't know with the percentage, Mr. Mayor, I know what he said the other night there, one point two for capital, jeepers, just in our roads, resurfacing and so on, this year's budget, we're four hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars, we're doing with roads, and then we also have another four hundred and twenty-four thousand in our operating budget for, um, public works, road, roadside maintenance, hardtop maintenance, loosetop maintenance, jeepers, that's nine hundred thousand dollars. I think we're doing pretty good for our township. Well, we're spending nine hundred on, as of the end of meeting number four, we're spending nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars on infrastructure, infrastructure renewal and replacement.
Yes.
Now, that's from taxation, that's nine hundred and some thousand dollars from taxation, but we're spending in infrastructure renewal, a total of one point seven five six million dollars on infrastructure renewal and replacement. Didn't all come from taxation? Nine seventy-eight comes from taxation, the rest comes from grants, gas tax grant, et cetera, et cetera.
Realize that, I just rounded off to nine hundred thousand, but I mean.
Yep.
That's all.
Well, one point seven five is not, I don't think you can sneeze at.
No.
But you also, Mr. Mayor, we deferred nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of capital that was recommended to be done in the infrastructure, that was recommended to be done this year, that we deferred.
Accurate, accurate statement, that's correct.
You can't keep deferring forever. Even at one percent, we're gonna cut fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Yes, but remember, you're deferring from the ask. You're deferring from the ask. You're not deferring from something that's written in stone, you're deferring from the ask.
I recognize that, but even at one percent, you're just gaining fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Yep.
A year.
That's true.
It, it's gonna take, to just correct that, it's gonna take twenty years to collect enough money to pay that.
Can't look at it that way. Can't look at it that way, because those projects that are deferred projects will come back next year. They may be financed in a different way. They may be financed in a different way. Can't, can't look at it as being a direct result. Anyway, we're back to the 1%, up or down. I, the chair's looking for a direction here. Speaker's one way or the other. Counselor Cameron, you haven't spoken.
I have not.
Time to speak.
I don't. And I can, and I can sympathize with, I can sympathize with Counselor Hunter. But I, I just, I can't see us putting it in this year. I would work very hard at it next year, the 1.2 or the 1.6, whatever it is.
No, it's 1% we're talking.
It's a 1%, well, yes, but at the meeting he.
Oh, I see.
I think he said 1.2, 1.6. I, 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 I would, I will consider that very hard next year. But I can't, to be quite truthful, I can't see it this year. So I, I, I would not support that this year.
It'd be harder next year when you get another grant, kind of $100,000.
Yeah, but that may not come.
I, I understand that, Counselor.
Then you cannot provide the same level of service, that's it.
Yeah?
Those are hard decisions, but they have to be taken. That's what you guys have been elected for.
The only one left to speak.
What was that?
Said Jack's the only one left to speak.
Well, I've got 122 pages here that I know nothing about. And the CAO informed me that we would talk about it March the 9th. I still can't get it up on speed on by March the 9th. So I have no opinion.
Okay, so, um, I'm about to call the question on the amendment, which adds 1% to the 2.53% that we must raise. Those in favor, say aye.
I put a forward, I'm still in favor of it. They keep deferring.
So I got Counselor Hunter with an aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the amendment fails. Now I'll go back to the original recommendation, which is that the committee recommends that council adopt the 2020 budget with a 2.53% increase in the township's residential tax rate. I'm about to call the question on the original recommendation. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So Counselor Hunter is a nay, and all the rest are ayes. Is that the way I'm reading the table? Okay, so the motion is carried. Now, does that get you where you need to be? All right, so now, where am I?
Going February.
All right, I'm at item number eight on the agenda, which is council inquiries, notices, and motions. Working hard to get to the closed session here. Are there any council inquiries or notices and motions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not a counselor, but I do have an inquiry about the waste curbside thing. There was a mention in that, um, documentation about the Blue Box. Some kind of a change to the Blue Box program.
Yes, now.
Somebody, uh, maybe inform me a little bit about what that is?
Yes, we had been asked by AMO, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, to provide them with a motion or a resolution of council that would address itself to three or four issues as it relates to the changes that are coming to the Blue Box program. So the Blue Box program is changing to a system of full producer responsibility for plastics and paper products. I've got it right. Paper and paper products. The government has been on and off about this for probably the last four years. And AMO said to us, address the following issues in the motion. When would you like the transfer? Why would you like the transfer on that date? And are you interested after the transfer in continuing to act as some sort of an agent under the new program, either a collection agent or a contract agent or whatever? So that motion came before council at the, at the, um, council meeting, which was on Monday night. And we debated that motion and came to a motion that we could send to AMO. Now, the motion is strictly for political purposes. It probably will not have anything to do with what we've asked, but it will give AMO some ammunition to take to the government to say, listen, we've got resolutions from 300 municipalities that are ready to transition now.
So it has no immediate?
No, no. Okay, uh, I'm at item number nine, the mayor's report. I'm going to skip.
No, hold on, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, my problem, my problem.
Sorry. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, staff and Mike for the flags that were put up down at the corner of number two. Um, not sure, but what's going on at the, uh, paramedic building there, that the in camera zone?
It's got changed, or it will get changed. It's been, it's been, it's been, they've been told to change it.
Good. And I also like, uh, I enjoy the new signs in, uh, Spencymore Cardinal. They look beautiful and, you know, new arenas and so on. Just wonder if we could find a few extra dollars to do Johnstown for new signs.
Okay, so going back to that program, that program was announced at a conference and it was a, uh, the intent of the program and the intent of the grant for, was, how was it phrased?
It was Main Street revitalization.
Main Street revitalization.
Yes.
And that's why the, the signage was focused on Cardinal and Spencymore, because they were the only two locations where we had Main Street.
I, I'd just like to know if we could find a little bit of, to get a, a quotation of the same signs that we did for Johnstown. Especially for our hall and pool.
Okay, so.
Our community hall and pool.
Okay, well, within, what you're basically asking is you're asking that the staff, within their discretionary budgets,
what? Yes.
Uh, can they come forward with, uh, some, uh, costs in?
So that we all look the same. Spencymore, Cardinal, Johnstown.
We, 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 we will complete that task and have something ready for the 2021 budget.
That was, uh.
Want to go back and raise the budget? All right.
Hope it's sooner than that, but.
Well, uh, let me, let me, uh, let me rephrase your, your request, Counselor, if I may. Mr. CAO, would you have your staff look deeply into their budgets, uh, which I'm sure there's already some money in those budgets for signage and sign replacement, to see if it might be possible to find a few signs for the Johnstown area within the existing budgets?
Investigate.
Thank you very much.
Well, better 2021.
All right, item number 10 is the question period. Does anyone have any questions? Staff in the audience, they're not asking. They've got their budgets, they've been, they've been, they've been worked over. I shouldn't use that term. They're uncomfortable enough, they're not going to raise more issues. All right, we're going to have a closed session here. The chair is looking for the motion to win the closed session. We have several.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps, seconded by Deputy Mayor Deschamps, committee of the whole, see you in the closed session at 8:19 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to proposed repending or acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local boards, specifically industrial land, and the next closed session date of February 6, 2020, February 10, 2020. Advice that is subject to solicitors' client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, specifically SDR report.
Okay, those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. So we'll just have a five-minute break.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps, the closed meeting is now adjourned and the committee of the whole is now resumed at 9:14 PM.
Okay, motion to arise from the in-camera session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. So the committee met, I'm reporting out from the in-camera session. And the, the committee met with, um, in an in-camera session to, uh, discuss a number of items. And out of the in-camera session, Counselor Dilabrah will bring forward a motion to approve the minutes of previous in-camera sessions. Counselor Dilabrah.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cameron, that the committee of the whole approves the closed session minutes, date of February 6, 2020, and February 10, 2020.
Thank you very much. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and reporting further, the committee discussed the number of items with staff and provided direction to staff on, uh, two specific initiatives. Uh, one concerning, uh, a land purchase and the other concerning a, um, a, a, a report received by council. And that is the report out, and now the chair is looking for the motion to, do I have a? No, I don't have to confirm it during dialogue. Just I need a motion to, to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
I, I have a, a motion to adjourn. Any improvements though?
Yep.
Um, moved by myself, seconded, seconded by Counselor John Hunter, that the committee of the whole now does adjourn at, uh, 9:17 PM.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.